Welcome to the public pickup. Come to order on February 20th at 6:30 PM. Everybody, audience, please silence your cell phones and we're gonna have everybody stand for the political.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm the United States of America. And to your Republic, for which it stands, one nation, united in this world with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight we have two appeals here and decide whether to grant or deny these requests for variance based on the established zoning board laws that's found in maniacs. The board will each hear each appeal separately. We'll hear from the applicant. And we will have time for a time to hear from the public on the variance. We will make our decision by voice votes. First, have the board members review the minutes from last month.
Evan Chairman, can I make a motion to approve the minutes from January 16th?
I select it.
All in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, minutes are approved as written. Thank you. The legal notice for tonight's agenda has been published to notify the general public of this meeting. May I have a motion to waive the reading of this publication? All in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion passed. At this time, I request a motion to open the public hearing on the first item on the agenda, which is the 7155 Taylor Road, East Syracuse, New York, backslash 73 point dash point oh two dash 14 point two. A lot area is a 56,400. This is for, let's see, this is for the Eric Donnelly. Could you please come forward and take, tell us what you'd like the variance, why you would need the variance?
So we can go there.
Wait, open the public meeting. Can I get a motion to open the public meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Second, all in favor? Oppose? Alright. Tell us what you'd like to do and the purpose.
Um, no, we would like to remove the pre-existing single-wide trailer that's there and build a single-family home. For our family.
Do you plan on everything on that top or did you take it off and you're just gonna build a simple family?
Yeah, yeah, so there is only the trailer there. We are gonna put in a new subject system to support the house and we're just gonna have the 1,400 square foot upon a basement, a walkout basement.
What's the zoning just now?
RA.
Is our, is the trailer allowed in the scenario?
This, this thing that is, well.
The zone was just changed.
Yeah.
They just went through a zone change. Okay. Yeah, so it was, it was what?
It was a commercial.
Okay.
It was so commercial. And then through the process went to RA.
So there's a, there's a commercial lot. Was that trailer a non-conforming use?
Yes.
Okay. Everyone know of it?
Basically, it's been there.
It's been there since when? Probably the sixties?
Yeah, fifty, sixties. The family used to own the, like, the whole street and as it got subdivided and the neighborhood got built, everything just kinda got built around it. And I think the original owners, my husband's grandfather was going to use, cause he used to like sell fruit and have fruit, like vegetable garden and stuff, so they planned at the time to make like a little stand or something, but.
Was that, was it sitting below this, the Marshall and everything around it?
Yeah.
That was the reason probably for the zone change. I think it's forming. One?
You're planning a three-bedroom house there? Will the house be built in such a way that you wouldn't need to come back within, there wouldn't be any setbacks?
No, like would we eventually need like an addition or anything like that, is what you're asking? Or like to move the house?
If somebody comes in for variance now, you have to have somebody feet to the side, somebody to the rear.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Will the house be built, which you wouldn't need?
Yeah, we've done like from the information Tom has given us, we've done multiple surveys done and we've made sure that it's within twenty, even if we were to add an extra garage in the future, we've made sure that that would be the twenty feet from the neighbor. And our family is the other neighbor, so we have plenty of space on both sides. We made sure that it's appropriate distance from the road and then the, we have plenty of space for the drain bill for the new subject system to go in the back.
You would have to sign off on the subject?
They did. We came and we did a plan and everything. Got a zone change and we did our subject change and presented that and now so this was just.
The next step. There.
I know there's a copy of the subject stuff in there. And the zone where the house could eventually sit and what the house would.
You, and this is the proposed sapient plant up there that has this, their overhead to their feature. From up there. Leave the higher level any right here, whether it gets left back there.
It's behind, it's on their hill too.
Yeah, but if they're not like where the
the sound system within.
Yeah, let's take that.
But there's a apartment that plays. It's pretty. It's for, yes, for the back. No, that was my only question was about the subject, but they signed off a minute.
Anybody, alright, you go ahead. Anybody online?
You wanna see the, the map for it or? It is, it is. It is around it, but.
Not yet. It's just on that, it's drawn on the one plan.
You'll see it kind of surrounding the area, but right here is their property. So just on a very quick, I mean, I can pull up the P V maps and D E C, but.
Oh, yeah, it's about the graphics.
Yeah, there was a proposed plan originally, but we just kept it on there, so we made sure that even if we did eventually add the structure of the survey, but it count for the twenty feet.
No further questions.
Anybody online? Nope, anybody in the audience, anybody else? Can I get a motion? Stop it? Okay. Third second, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, so discussion?
Get any letters from the neighbors?
No, sir. No letters from neighbors?
Nope. I mean, with I, looking at the property when I throw by, it's an improvement with everything taken down and there's gone through the steps, gone through the zone change. Just taking everything off the property and making it, everything around it's RA. That's how I felt when I threw by.
I worked with a lot size across the street. It's very similar in size.
Yeah.
So as long as the house doesn't involve any setbacks, I don't.
Okay. Any other discussions you guys wanna bring up? Yeah. Okay. Let's go through the five criteria questions the board is determined whether the variance requested is a balance with or a detriment to health and safety and welfare of the community. Alright, question number one, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a favorable alternative to the variance?
No.
Yeah, the benefit is to build a house. Can't do it without. Makes sense, yeah. Yeah. Shouldn't put a house there, I mean, that's right, you, you need it, so. Alright, so let's know. Whether undesirable change would be proposed produced in character of neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties.
No.
Be an improvement.
The RA is, the size is is inconforming basically.
So maybe we're not to do there else as a whole district.
Whether the proposed variance is substantial? Oh. Not the area variance. Number one.
Yeah, I think it is.
Fifty-six thousand four hundred.
That's, what is the actual variance?
So the lot area is forty-three thousand five sixty of the required one hundred thousand. They're requesting a variance of fifty-six thousand four hundred, so to me, yes.
More than eighty percent substantial.
Absolutely.
So it's one of fifty percent substantial? Okay. Eric?
Yes.
It's substantial?
Depending on your size, yes.
Will the variance have adverse impacts on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? Now.
Well, particularly because we know that the sapient is in that's a lot, so I think also that's cleaned up too.
Sapient's going down the slope. I think this apartment complex.
It's further, further back though, but you gotta go closer to like a quarter mile down the hill towards Owen and then on the right.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it's not behind them, it's further.
Further west.
It treats.
So that would be a no, right, cause it's sapient and then that's cleaning up the area. What if the alleged difficulty was self-created?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Based on the Z B A after taking into consideration the five factors, the benefits to the house and does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or community. So yes.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Okay. D B A further finds the variance for so the fifty-six thousand four hundred feet is the middle of variance that should be granted in order to preserve and protect the character that they put in the health, safety and welfare of the community. Based on that discussion, could someone make a motion to grant or deny area variance for this effort?
I'd like to make a motion, Sonic Port Grand Area variance to Eric Donnelly. Real property located in seven dot five five Taylor Road, East Syracuse, New York, one three oh five seven. Tax map by D zero seven point dash two oh two dash point four point two. variance granted to a person. Running construction. Three-bedroom, single-family home, forty-eight feet by thirty feet. Lot area variance of fifty-six thousand four hundred. To provide relief for the required, I mean, that's square foot requires.
I second their motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion passed. Tom will connect with you. Alright.
Keep watching all those other houses go off.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be sending you, the big work in town will be in touch for the. I talked to.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Anywhere. Okay, so now up is the whole road property that I will see at fifty-two eighty Ho Lane, Fayetteville North, tax map one zero four dash one oh one dash thirty-nine point two, area variance of nine thousand one hundred and eleven. Can I get a motion over the public hearing?
Make a motion.
I gotta wait the reading first.
Yeah, wait for you.
Oh, I gotta wait the reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, can I get a motion for to open the public hearing?
I made a motion to open the public hearing.
Eric, seconded, clear. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Alright, introduce yourself.
Sure, Scott Freeman, Keppler, Premier Land State Architect. Builder developer, Thomas Douglas, Thomas Allen Holmes. We're here to talk about a seventeen lot subdivision. And are you guys familiar with the plan? Quick walkthrough.
Getting pulled up, yeah.
Alright, so we have sixteen, seventeen, seventeen lots, sixteen are for homes. One of the sixteen is an existing home, so you have one new, new lot. Plus fifteen is sixteen, then you got lot seventeen, which is the public area with the stormwater. And the reason I bring that up is the reason for the variance is lot number nine is non-conforming according to the forty thousand square foot requirement. So lot nine is a little smaller based on the planning board's recommendation to there's a wetland, an intermittent stream, it's not a wetland, but it's a we're permitting in a wetland area drainage, they wanted to retain this in a public area. So it'll never be developed, so that, so that's why we reduced lot nine from a conforming lot size to a non-conforming lot size. So conforming lot size is forty thousand square feet. This lot is thirty thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine, and if you do the math, that's seventy-seven percent of the area required, so it's a twenty-three percent reduction in land area. So it's, it's slightly smaller. So that's, that's the that's the ask. We feel that if you look at the other lots, most of them are a little bit bigger than forty thousand square feet and all the other lots, the remaining lots meet, meet that criteria. So one lot has a reduced area in the backyard that you would never, you would never even see from the road. They all had uniform frontages, frontages at hundred and fifty or greater feet. So the, the only way you're ever gonna notice that this lot is smaller is if you're in an airplane and you have this orange line over the property. There's a lot of green space built into this project. And if you look at this neighborhood relative to adjacent neighborhoods across the street, the lots aren't even forty thousand square feet. So, so this, this lot that's at a reduced size, it's, is much bigger than, than the lot sizes of the the neighboring lots. So it's from ten thousand feet, I can have five years of background on the site. Want to talk about it, but I'll keep it brief for now.
Is that question? So we're just, this lot here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are there thinking you're a recommendation to more anymore? You want me to read the recommendation?
Yes, please read the recommendation to the clinic. Well, yeah, go ahead, read the recommendation.
Number Western made a motion seconded by member Salmon and Carrie DeMannosley to send a positive recommendation to the zoning board of appeals for the variance in lot size for lot nine, be granted based upon the following reasons. This is a conforming subdivision except for this one lot, so the subdivision is in substantial compliance. The overall site is a lack of density and overall supports this layout. But area lot behind this lot nine is in part permanently undeveloped due to the drainage district area and is partially against other residential in the rear. This lot size for lot nine is comparable to other like lot sizes in the general area. And the town board has requested that in lieu of an HOA, the drainage district be created, which has caused the lot to be under.
Cause they want those streams to be guarded seventeen. Correct?
Correct.
That's why. Yes, but I remember the background, the lot was conforming in size when there was proposed to be an HOA on the site. And that would control the drainage district and so forth, but the town is of the opinion they would like to have the drainage district, that it's better for the town. It's better for this development and just overall a better idea to have this kind of a facility in the control of the town and not the HOA. Part of that recommendation then caused the engineer to talk about wanting more land in that lot seventeen then was previously part of the HOA lot.
The drainage district was only those seventeen lots.
This seventeen, lot seventeen.
Or that is the drainage district.
Yes. Just the one.
Just the seventeen? Yeah.
What is the term drainage, just implied? That it's, it's something that's going to be in, in the control of the town that controls drainage for this lot to make sure that there isn't inappropriate runoff to other lots. There's some, there's the ponds and it's gonna block it, so that's the drainage district, do you mind to box? Yes, the town's in charge, but also it's not its own drainage district, it's being joined to an adjacent drainage district, so it's it's, it's going to expand the drainage district.
You know, the only I might add also is the HOA would be run from a, a community group from within and the town discussion we had that would be maintained by the town and the drainage district, but that word means is the people that live in this drainage district, they put the money over to pay for this. So the whole community doesn't pay for this, the people within the drainage districts would pay for the yearly maintenance.
My question was is, so those are the only residents, so like Mr. Britton, who lives right behind it is not part of that district.
He's not part of that.
But these houses.
Yes, they're.
They would be what funded.
This is sixteen.
Yes, it's a shared responsibility. If these lots all drain into that facility, not just maybe lot nine paying for it, but all, all the lots that you see on this plan are within the drainage district, so it's, it's a pretty fair way to take care of things.
Basically, that drainage, you know, that's all gonna be paid for by the developer upfront, by the way, the this whole.
The construction, yeah.
Yeah, the whole construction and the digging of the.
So another, another question is just to me, it might just be a silly question, but why was this road not adjusted considering that these lots to the right are much bigger? Right, so if you shifted that, that way, that you could give another what, twenty-three percent?
It would be a complete redesign and we would lose other lots. Is it?
It's a topography, but I know that wasn't essentially.
Yeah, there's a lot of great change.
I've, I've watched a number of those meetings, but I know that there's more to it that I missed, so I just wanna make sure I'm not missing anything.
Okay.
Yeah, to the left and right like lots of not, uh, ten and eleven. Lot ten is forty thousand forty-two square feet, lot eight is forty thousand three forty-three, so every time you move the line a little bit it impacts. We actually, when we started out, we had three, three conforming, three non-conforming lots and we were able to get rid of two and then Jamie, Jamie and the board landed on, okay, you have one that it's really a little give and take, cause the developer's actually giving, selling a small amount of lot, which he's gonna get less money for that, but then the town's getting bigger drainage area, but the drainage district makes it more, more controllable and, you know, easier means for the system to maintain it, so. Yeah. Hey, I, I gotta, I gotta, Jamie, I work for him.
I, this doesn't, it's not part of lot nine, but I, is this, I'm gonna put this in my kind of lay-in terms, is this a master plan where it has to be developed before the construction of the homes? Or is it phased where you do portions of it and then later on the overflow areas develop?
It's a great question. To build this subdivision, first thing we need is engineering approval for the entire road layout, vertical and horizontal. And the, the first thing that has to happen is you have to address the low point. So New York State's fee stormwater permit, we have to, we have to start with the low point, so this basin has to be a hundred percent taking care of the water before we work our way up and finish the road, so, so it's phased, the way it's constructed, when this project is finished, you'll have a road, storm, sanitary water, all the utilities and the drainage, without even having a house being built. All that needs to happen can be approved through the town engineer's drawings, the town engineer monitoring during construction. Our, Mr. Douglas paying for our, our office to go out there on a weekly basis and make sure it conforms to the stormwater permit. If we don't comply with the stormwater permit, we're fined and it's to no benefit to, to have the D B C find us or ultimately if we don't do our job, so we're in this together.
Yeah.
You know, we sign the, you know, for the publics now, at least at the start of construction, we're signing documents that says we're gonna build it to the drawings, they're gonna inspect it to the drawings, and at the end a licensed surveyor is gonna go out there and shoot grades and, and conform that this is built properly. I'm working on projects, some projects now, most projects go well. Surveyor goes out there, everything's built properly, I have other ones where contractors take shortcuts and they want us to sign up on it, it doesn't look like the survey, go out and redo it. So projects right now, we'll be digging stormwater facilities in the winter to be right, so.
Stating a drainage, and I, I've, I've got friends that live in Churchill and I've got phone calls and I've talked to our, our highway folks about it. Will this help at all with the drainage problems that are at the corner of like Churchill and Merrifield? Like the second we get more than an inch and a half of rain, they're flooded and underwater.
It's, it's the same amount of water that comes on it today, we'll release the water at the same rate after construction, but it's but the big, the highs, the big storm events are gonna be slowed down, so the, the if you have a straw with a little bit of water coming out, that same straw is gonna is gonna come out, but during the, but during the big storm events, it's gonna, it's gonna hold back the water, it's gonna be a controlled release. So it's definitely gonna, definitely holding back a lot of water.
I'll answer your question. If you look, we need to, which is unprecedented, a redundant retention basin. So there's water being discharged on Cahill through that cul-de-sac and it flows onto our property as for thirty years or more. And that up until this design, free flow down to Churchill unrestricted. So regardless of how much rain, that water passed, ours was just a basket. It created water, but it passed through our property. And now with that redundant retention basin, we're capturing that and we're holding it and discharging at a much slower rate. So, yes, and it's built to dam standards, so.
It's not gonna, it's not gonna break away. And New York, New York State D C requires us to do the big oval, that's what's required, to, to, to hold back the two and five twenty-five, fifty, hundred meter storm, that little area beyond the basin. You know, the, the planning board has heard the concerns of, of the community, there's a lot of old, you know, you have narrow roads, you have smaller pipes, you have aging infrastructure. It's a, it's, it's a lot to fix all of that, but, you know, as part of this project, the design team agreed to add this, this extra piece and it'll, it'll help improve the drink, reduce the runoff above and beyond what's typically required by New York State.
It won't create more.
Definitely not.
So that's, I think that's more.
When it rains, it's still, yeah, my, my point is, I just wanna be honest, when it rains, there's water's gonna fill the.
I just know, I just know that that, that is a big problem on that street.
No, it is, we, we know.
I know, you know, that the property behind it gets your left.
Yep.
Up the corner there, it's, you know, you're driving through, it's true water, any time it rains, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Freeman or we hear from the public, other public numbers?
Just look at this map. Move the map to the right building. What is that little triangle on Churchill? Right there. Yeah, Shanahan, is that? Is that somebody's?
Not our property, it could be a, we think Jamie, maybe it's somebody's parcel that was, that one homeowner may own a couple of parcels and they're not included in one subdivision.
No one's asked about that, so I don't know what that is.
Just wondering how the what that is, how did you determine the size of this lot? I mean, I've, I've heard some of the meetings, but not all.
Well, the, the reason, one of the reasons that, where the basin is, that's the low point of the site, and when you get past the basin, it goes uphill, so it's, it's, it's very ineffective, expensive place to develop, you would never wanna put a house there, it's, it's very steep. And then as, as part of the development criteria, working with the town, they want us to preserve some of the trees on the site, so we, we never saw these two, uh, earlier, we did have a little cul-de-sac over there, but we've negotiated with, with the town to stay away from that, that wooded area.
Spasito? It looks like it says Michael Esposito on that property.
It looks like it says Michael Esposito, was that property?
Oh, I, you may still.
But the properties, like it's a non-conforming lot, really, you couldn't build it, you could add it to another piece of property, but you couldn't build on it.
There was some early conversation early on about possibly selling it to us uh for egress, but the hill, the ridge there, so it's deep.
If we use that for egress, we'd be, it would be detrimental to the estate, we'd be taking down a lot of trees that wouldn't be necessary.
I see it, it looks like a notch-shaped block.
It is.
And um and then.
For you to get your answers.
On to four, trees. I'm just wondering, I'm looking at the line, it was this space here, I'm like, we're coming, doesn't include that.
I'm just, I'm adjacent to that lot, I'm, I don't know either.
Derek, do you have any questions? All right, Mr. Freeman, have a seat, we'll hear from other people from the publics, if they would like to come up and speak. Paul Claire, I'm so sorry.
Do I wanna say something?
Introduce yourself to us.
Yep, I'm David Britton, I'm on five two seven out of Old Lane. Just pull the map back up.
We have all this up here, pointing to it out here, just to elaborate.
He's a nice guy, he is, I'm part of the opposition, but he's still a nice guy. So I took a semester of hydrology in college, which for the moment makes me an expert, sort of, not really, but. So I studied water a little bit, and one thing that you guys may or may not be aware of is there's a creek. So this is me right in this spot, there's a creek that goes behind me, behind Burns, behind Litter. Dives under Churchill down there, and that's, you know, they're called intermittent stream, but for this discussion, intermittent, in this case means flows all the time. Now, it has dried up on a rare end of August, September, it's a dry summer, but if you dig down in there, I used to know that.
That goes from here. Goes through here, this territory is under.
Yep, creeper here, and then I, I believe not gonna bother the creek, and there's a drainage area, creek runoff. It flows most of the time from near NASA's house, flows down this way.
Through you.
Yeah, thanks.
Down that way.
Right, so Mother Nature's figured out, where is the water gonna go? At the moment, it goes from this whole area basically down this creek and down that creek.
Yep.
So what we don't know is what will happen if we develop this. Will those two little creeks remain the main affluent areas for this area or or not? So thankfully, they're planning not to bother that creek and they're planning not to bother that creek. But we're gonna have, I don't know, here in the past, three acres maybe, a road, driveway, roof. Which is, you know, that does not absorb any water, right? Uh majority of the trees, some of them are cut out already, a lot more trees are gonna go down and there'll be yard. And as we all know, yards don't soak up nearly as much water as trees or even this brush does. So my guess is there will be more runoff when it rains, I think uh Mr. Kelly mentioned that. There'll be probably more water running off when it rains, and we don't know, will it go into the pond, which is. Pretty big-sized pond, that might, and they work great all the time to rain, dump in the pond and be gradually released. Or Mother Nature's decided that this creek and this creek, you know, how it dumps, and those still may be where it goes. And this pond could be a beautiful thing, with a bubble in it, and a nice little feature people can look at. That could be just leashes for kids, maybe mosquito, pavement, I don't know, or it could be just a big mud puddle. Because Mother Nature's still sending the water the way it's been doing it for hundreds or thousands of years, so. It's an educated guess as to whether that will help the water drainage a lot, so just wanna put that out there. As far as the variance, which I guess we're considering tonight. Uh it's been mentioned, it's true that the greater area, there are a lot of lots that are significantly smaller. I think in this area, it's sold at forty thousand square feet, which is just a little bit under an acre, but the places that are immediately next to this. Britton, Burns, Winter, uh NASA, who's sitting over there, she's up here, uh Hollander. And somebody else, Esposito, that who is up here, they're all bigger than an acre, so I am one point one two, if I remember correctly. And I'm the smallest one that are close to this, so. One way of looking at it is, we're kinda giving the the guys a gift by letting them have a forty thousand versus over an acre, which the rest of us are. But then to go, you know, down to thirty thousand change, I would consider to be a significant reduction to go from forty thousand plus to. But just over, over thirty thousand, so it would be considered that significant reduction. And I'm not mad at Mr. Douglas over there or Mr. Freeman, he's a nice guy, look, he's got the best smile. So they're they're they have a different perspective, so I'm trying to sort of protect my neighborhood. You know, I like the the greenery and stuff, I appreciate it, you get the wild turkeys, you got a pair of uh. Great horned owls, you've got a fox family, occasionally a bobcat comes through, a lot of deer coming here. But, you know, we're gonna lose a lot of that, so I'm sort of sad about that. But um also, these guys are businessmen, right, so their plan is to take this piece of land, it sounds sort of crude, to say, squeeze some money on it. Which, that's, you know, if they own the property, that's their right to try to do that, right, to make money, that's their business people, they wanna make money on the land. But from the the neighbor's point of view, it's like to minimize the damage that's done, so another way of. Getting around this, if somebody planned out, I do believe, who takes a lot of extra work for Mr. Freeman's outfit, it's been countless hours. Is this probably fifty moves this way, fifteen feet, this whole circle dividing this way, these are huge lots. Back here, it is pretty steep, but up near this house, it's, you know, it's still doable, I believe, you can do this whole thing over. And make that lock and form, it'd be a lot of extra work, this road could be diagonally popped in there, hopefully we shift it over, see this road turns. Which is this west, doesn't have to be west, it could go straight, I think it was lots of bigger. Or we could say instead of having sixteen sixteen houses here, we can have fifteen houses, and it's not even an issue, right? But, you know, their perspective's different, they wanna make as much money, have as many lots as they could get. From the homeowners' perspective, our perspective is. You know, there's a zoning for a reason, and we love to have the regulation maintained, so nothing personal, I'm a. All right, so that's what I've got to say.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else from the public that'd like to speak?
Well, just gonna say in the documents that they submitted to the zoning board, there was some.
Uh can you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, hi, I'm Alice Nassar, I live on the channel corner. So this would be my property. Um for year, for year, okay.
That's on passion.
Uh no, I'm with Churchill Court.
Or Churchill Court, absolutely.
So the water does drain through, there's an easement that goes through my property and put in the subdivision above that was put in. And then so easements, they stop, that's the former Rogers property. And that's what the creek is, this holds that there, there's a call to the stream that does flow. And it's pretty deep. So um so the stream does flow, it flows continuously, and there's a lot of water that goes through, and I know. It's very kind of they offered to to take care of that problem for the town. But we're not sure that it will take care of the problem, and there were some things I noticed that were irregularities in their report. So the water retention ponds are said to only be two hundred feet long. And um that they'll hold a million gallons each, well, now there's two ponds, so I didn't see in the documents that were sent. To the zoning board that there would be uh the two water retention ponds right in the middle of the neighborhood of children. And elderly people, but that right up to our yards, these water retention ponds that will, I guess. Fill with water and then the water will drain and then fill with water or the water will sit there. Um they say they're gonna have a some kind of something to air it, the water, so we don't get um sheeted, but um. Um also, um so they, let's see, the other problems were, they said they're only gonna disturb seventeen point two six acres. On the whole thirty acres, well, they've already disturbed more than seventeen point two six acres. Cause they removed, they cleared over eighteen acres of trees already off of this lot, off of this twenty-nine acres. And they said that there would be uh. Let's see, the total built park would be only, um so they would only disturb seventeen acres, which is impossible. They said there would be no excavation and no heavy equipment on the property. So how are they going to level the high areas and fill in the low areas without removing any uh materials from the side? So there was a problem earlier with the dam, it was over dam height, they now lowered that to twelve feet. So that would be under the fifteen-foot requirement, so that's how they're taking care of that. Oh, and so they said sixteen houses, so in um F, D one F, it says twenty-one single families.
I think, I I don't know, we're looking at, is that on this plan, I think it's been changed, unless there's.
Well, that was the one that's submitted to the zoning board. I clicked on that.
That's a plan that's been submitted to the zoning board right here.
Yeah, it said this D one F, twenty, it says twenty-one single family house, I think that was just a.
Was it an old, one of the old sheeted that?
This is a, this this right here says a, you know, cluster subdivision of twenty lots.
Yes, so one is an existing lot, but it must be the old, the the old EAF that over there. Right, and this is where place it says D one, said.
This was originally dated twelve sixteen, I think. Twelve sixteen nineteen.
Oh, just because that was what was submitted to you.
And it was.
So D one little B, it said a cluster was approved. Which I don't think a cluster was ever approved, because with a cluster, they have a lot more green area and they can make smaller lots. But that was, that was not actually approved. Um, oh, take your, your.
This is the submission.
That'd be, that'd be A F. Why click on what was on the zoning board agenda?
That's what was given to me, whatever's on the zoning board agenda is what was given.
Cause what she's referencing is right there.
In the D one E, it said it would not be in multiple phases.
Okay, well, that's not it.
So, so I assume you were going to sell.
But you did, you did have an FBAF, did you have your FBAF?
Uh I don't have it with me, I I couldn't tell you what was submitted right now, I mean, I was prepared to talk to the seventeen lots that.
No, I know, but but also.
Yeah, well, that was the C or fourth stage, fourth time.
There was no seeker, there was no seeker who's for, oh, for. Yeah, that's, yeah, we're just saying it's wrong.
So, but you're saying now it is not multiple things, right?
For women to the planning board, it was seventeen.
Yeah.
Well, not.
But now let's, you're correct, now now let's hear.
The plan is what we were asked to submit.
Well, I think it was a concern of some people that lived up on Duga, this was kind of an area that was undefined. And they were afraid that it was gonna be further developed, maybe it was saying twenty-one houses.
But no, it was a seventeen.
Seventeen only with no future.
No future.
Seventeen, that plan is what we're going for on the entire site with no additional changes.
Okay.
So. And in and in this form, before you go back to planning work, this could be revised, make sure you check a look at it.
Okay, so D one T, it said in multiple phases and they said no, but I understood you're going to sell. Get the plan and the person wants it and then build, so how should that be all in one day?
Instead, we're building seventeen lots, one's existing.
Yeah.
And fifteen new lots, fifteen plus one is sixteen, and the seventeen lot is open space, so it's sixteen homes. One existing.
Seventeen lot blocks in town.
Right, okay, so sixteen, fifteen.
Fifteen ponds, one article.
All right.
And at one phase, they're building fifteen houses.
So how, how should I sell, get the plan and build all at once?
No, phasing is usually, it's putting in an infrastructure, you're never.
So building.
They never, the the building can go on until he sells every lot.
It could be three years, it could be five years.
So that leads to our other.
But that's not, that's not considered a phase.
Oh, all right, I understood that, I'm sorry, so then it leads to um D two J said um. Their building hours would be all week, and then Saturday seventy-five, Sunday seventy-five, and holidays seventy-five. Which for three years, I think, you know, it's gonna drive us crazy, and that's a lot of noise.
No, but let me say, the construction, to build this, the detention basin and the roads, it's gonna take less than a year. And then you're gonna have home construction that happens after this.
Well, some of it, which is right along, yeah, but, okay, so I just think the seventy-five, Saturday, Sunday, and holidays is too much. Especially if they're gonna take multiple years to.
Well, that's a planning board issue, that's not a TBA issue.
All right, so that goes to the, that's not a, that's not a TBA, that goes back to the planning board. Okay.
Tell us more about your objections to lot number nine, that's what we're gonna do.
All right, so originally, they said there was no stream, no wetland. And on this form, it also says zero surface water, zero wetlands. And if there was, it's called a seep wetland, it's not over fourteen acres, so the state doesn't protect it. It doesn't connect to an available waterway, so that's why it's no longer protected, but it does exist, it's there. It's a wetlands engineer that was hired by the builder said it was a seep wetland. And so they said there was no wetland or surface water in this form that they submitted to you, so just. So that does affect the, so lot nine is being moved over um for this. What, is being moved over for the retention ponds.
For lot seventeen.
Yeah, which is where the big million gallon shallow retention ponds and holding ponds are going to be constructed. Behind uh the Britton's house, the Burns' house, and um. So. They said it's gonna be, but it's a um only, it would only take up one point three six acres. So looking at that map, I don't see how that could actually only be one point three six acres.
So, are you talking about seventeen or are you talking about not?
So this is seventeen.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ask, I'm gonna actually go back to Claire's question, what do you have in objection versus lot nine?
As lot nine, the reason to make it smaller was for the, I guess, I don't know, it was a water retention pond. Or for the drainage district, for the for the wetlands that doesn't exist and the intermittent stream that doesn't exist. So that variance is being requested for this.
So it's basically being requested for lot nine to make way for water to go into the to the water district, the drainage district.
It's preservation of the the existing intermittent stream and the existing trees, we're not touching it. We do not have a detention basin coming into that waterway, we're not crossing over that intermittent stream.
The plan would felt like it was in the best interest of the neighbors and neighborhood as well as the town. If the town controlled that area through maintenance of their own, rather than leaving it up to homeowners.
Homeowners.
So we made that combination to the town, so we made changes by a lot of cushion.
All right, so let's go back to lot nine and figure out, because even though, so I get it, so I I'm just gonna try to. So they moved it to better the neighborhood to make the drainage better to go into that.
It's just, it's to better the neighborhood down downstream, because it doesn't better the neighborhood for any of the adjoining properties of. Almost a two-acre lot, so it doesn't affect us at all, it only solves the. Okay, so it doesn't affect us at all, it only solves the town's problem of flooding down on um newer fields and hopefully. But I understand that the town wants to take care of that and they do appreciate that the builder is uh working with them to try to take care of that problem.
Okay, so is there anything else regarding lot nine that you have issues with the size that moving it over to make way for that water?
I, I know in the codes it says it's supposed to maintain the character of the neighborhood. And all of our lots are over forty, the smallest one is forty seven thousand square feet. Okay, so that would be, so I won't point out any of the other issues I saw.
On Shiraz Lane, is that the size? See, you made the point that on Shiraz Lane.
Cross Hope Lane, there are a few smaller houses.
Well, that's very close.
Most of them are small.
Most of them are, most of Dolly, most of Churchill.
Okay, well, that's across the road.
Yeah, but it's very close, it's that much on the map.
Well, look how close, do you see how close my property is to the building? All I have is a little wire fence between me and where they're gonna put lots, uh, five, six, seven, and eight. Okay, and five, six, seven, and eight are just barely forty thousand square feet.
But they're still performing?
Well, if, if you don't, if you don't go with the acre, one acre, so you, no more than one acre lots, but forty seven, forty thousand square.
So you own the property that says National Living Trust?
No, I'm next to them.
Okay.
All massive, all analysis.
Yeah, but that's not five and six.
No.
It's seven and eight.
Where are you?
Seven, eight, and seventeen, all adjoining my property.
Yeah, what?
Seven, eight, and seventeen, my property draws to this dotted line here. And so they did say that they would adjust this because if, if the owner of lot eight decided to fill in. So that is adjusted now that it, I have, that that's owned by the town?
Yes.
All right.
You have a buffer, you have a buffer between, you took a sliver of land and then we put it into the, the town property, created additional buffer.
So if, if somebody blocked that creek off, which would make a lake in my lower yard, immediately, it would be a huge lake. The town is going to come in and take care of that problem.
You needed it.
The town is, yeah, the town is adding a piece that wasn't originally in the plan.
Jimmy, you asked.
Into the town, I didn't, I thought I mentioned it.
And I do appreciate that a, a great deal. I, I know that that's gonna be something that they, the town has to.
By lot seventeen will be the responsibility of the town.
Okay, and then the um, so also along the border with um, in lots, five, six, seven, ten, I believe eight, um, are grinder pumps. So those grinder pumps are pumping uphill to Shiraz Lane. So I'm concerned if there's flooding and somebody's on vacation and their grinder pump doesn't work, electric power goes out, that's going to also affect the lower part of my yard.
That doesn't have anything to do with lot nine.
Okay, so that's not your concern. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
And I do appreciate the change.
Yes, yeah. Anybody else in the public that wanna, and introduce yourself for me?
I'm Suzanne Eller, and sometimes my property is on the plan, sometimes it's not, so I don't know.
Sorry.
All right, I'm down on the west side, uh, down slope.
Okay.
So I guess I would argue that I'm probably on the front lines if anything goes wrong with the contention ponds and also the contention is really the stormwater. I mean, that's the biggest uh, I think for the neighborhood, I mean, there's a lot of issues, but again, the adjusted plans were, but here, and I think they had threatened, said it very well, that, you know, what the concerns are. And this is one, thus property, if that property was taken out of it, that's one less concern than of the drainage. And since it doesn't conform, I don't think it's too much of an ask to just, if, 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 the alternative is to rearrange the plans, so kind of put work to it, which you guys don't wanna do with, because it's a lot of work, I don't think it's too much to, we went for this one property that's smaller anyway, and just remove some of our concern.
Thank you, Sullivan, thank you, appreciate it. Anybody else? Appreciate the public speaking, anybody online? Okay, um, and I believe you said you had a letter, but it was from.
Yes, Mr. Brennan, you, did you want me to share it or you all said? I think you covered everything. The only thing I, you asked about the vegetation screen in your letter.
Yeah, I don't know. So my hope was, A, that the yard is not granted, and B, if it was granted, since it's a small lot, something, if it was right against me, so required the builders to put in additional vegetative screening between me and the houses can be closer to me than the zoning belongs to.
Okay, um, I think, for a closed public hearing, I'm gonna comment to that, that may be with that screening, be more of a planning board and engineering type around that one. So I, I, I appreciate you bringing that up, but that is something that sometimes you say you have the conditions, but I think there's just more complexity to it. So that would be up to the, the planning board and the, and the engineer for all of that. So, yeah, this part of the plan?
It's on.
Okay. This one up?
It's on.
Okay, all right, can I? I do have one question. How many acres is lot seventeen? Three, sorry.
Five points.
But we're only discussing that lot nine, but I just wanted to know how many acres.
Yes, this is not, I said surveyor, five point six acres.
Okay.
The other point I'd like to make, if other towns would take lot nine property line and would go right through lot seventeen, and lot nine would be three, four acres, and lot eight would be three, four acres. But every town has a different way of doing it, but to me, we're talking about lines on a, a piece of paper. It's, it's still the same amount of road, it's the same amount of furniture.
Same look.
We're talking about the number of lots here and a paper line, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, so can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm gonna get a motion to close the public hearing.
Seven. All in paper? Bye, anybody opposed? Okay, so let's discuss it with the board. Let's go to the, we want to first, or go to the tech area in first? Go with that, and then we'll discuss, okay?
And being specific that we are only talking about variance for.
Lot nine. Okay.
I've got a question first, I got two questions. Uh. So the, on this map, the detention pond to the overflow area.
There's some.
One feet together.
Yeah, the, the main detention ponds will fill up to a certain elevation and it'll slowly release water. And the biggest storm, and I know all the way to the town, it'll spill over and go into the intermittent stream, and that will flow down.
Okay, so the, so the water that collects here will go into those two, three depths on it now.
It's the low ground, it goes downhill, everything will go into those two streams that converge, who is going to turn it over. There's, there's no way it's going anywhere else unless you build, uh, various changes along it. Something else, and where does the stream go once it goes downhill? If I was to say it's existing, it's ready to stay away now. This detention basin is going to improve the stormwater emissions to the coast.
Sure, please, yes.
Yes, well.
This, yeah, this was approved by the D C, the stormwater. It's not just our engineer, we're the town, it was approved by. Just for the side, side of it. So.
And that's detention basin, not only approved, not only treats the water on this site, it treats an additional, I'm not gonna say an acre, it's gonna be wrong, but there's a lot of acres of additional water offsite that it treats beyond this site. So we're treating drainage, uh, increased runoff on our site, and we're also addressing drainage offsite from other, other uphillous properties.
It's not eight acres, it's landlocked above our property off the hill, and we're picking that water and we're treating.
Of course. These two ponds. And then the D C, D C gives you a choice, we could have built the diversion well and, and rounded that water around the site and put it into that discharge point of the church and reduced size of our basin. But we're collecting it to make it an improvement to the community. So there are some benefits to the project, it's not just for the dollar or the number of lots here, it's also uh, a community benefit that base, that it treats water from beyond our property.
Okay, the other question we had was lot sixteen, existing house, somebody's living there now, but you're, you live there? Well, obviously you don't wanna move, everyone shifts this up.
Right, I mean, reality is, we've been five years in this place, and we've done so many uh modifications, changes, changes.
Which I know only.
Yeah, and I don't wanna worry, that's, that's not, that's, um, but uh, it, it's become a very costly fifteen acres. And to reengineer that whole thing, it, it would even be costly.
I, I have this. If it's topography, where's the red line? Where? Where? Uh, right.
Yes, agree.
Intermittent stream, that's, that's classified by the.
Federal court.
Oh.
Barbie Court viewed that.
Yeah, right, that's why.
But I, I skipped that day of engineering class.
Yeah, but well, it's very hard, cause every year changing, of course, in this project, the classification has changed three times.
All right, that's good.
And I, I, I wanna.
Question.
Because I actually, this is one of the very first projects that I've ever owned when I first came up, playing with the zoning board. And there have been many, many iterations of this project. I, again, I'm not an engineer, I'm just gonna say what I understand from seeing everything, the topography is extremely challenging here in the entirety of the site, and this particular road configuration um has been very carefully engineered to allow for that. Um, and the, the reengineering of it, I'm not sure, I'm not even sure what it would look, I mean, like, say, oh, you couldn't do this, and then a road has to go a certain way to get a certain furniture, it's, it's very complicated. Um, and, and I will say that, that the engineer, the thing where engineer has been involved in this project very intently, D C has, yeah, so that this configuration um was considered a, a good configuration, the lots originally, there were twenty one lots, and I think they were, they were smaller than this.
Oh, no, we're, we're smaller, so we've.
Smaller, smaller, so now it's a conforming, what's called a conforming subdivision, that was completely conforming until the discussion about making this a better situation for the town, for the lot seventeen. That's my understanding. That's what engineer doing.
Okay, so let's go to the, to discussion questions, and then we'll go into discussion for us. All right, ready? Number one, whether benefits taught by athletes can be achieved by feasible alternative to the variance. Just strictly talking about lot nine, that's it. Well.
No, it's lot nine.
Lot nine.
Lot nine.
So, and they're asking, so let's go back real quick, we're gonna answer that question, it's the um variance nine thousand one hundred and eleven up for the total of forty thousand. So seventy seven percent is what I heard that percentage earlier, or the need twenty three, thirty three percent. Okay, well, the benefits taught by athletes can be achieved by feasible alternative to the variance.
Is it a fault on a say yes?
Yeah, no. Yeah. Hey, yeah, well, if you, if the answer is, like, if the answer is yes, what's the reason? If the answer's no, what's the reason? So, I think it's the topography way that it is, and when the streams, and it goes there. It'd be, it'd be a no for me. Um, I mean, you can do the shifting of it, but that would be, I mean.
Can you, can you, remove the site up now?
You have to.
You take a lot more, a lot more cost, a lot more trucks.
You're not, you're not in this discussion anymore. You're out of this freedom. No, no. So, I think, I, I say no, it's the topography as well.
Now, this, I will, I will go back, I'm gonna say in there, just the, the fact that a little bit, that, yes, you could shift, it would be very creative, but there are seven lots in total that are under forty thousand six hundred square feet. So it would be a, a, a game to figure out how to make that work.
Oh, a lot to be affected, to be down.
Yes, so.
They found out the twenty one from seventeen.
Twenty one lots from seventeen, well, that's a fifteen, technically. Since his is already, to say we're not gonna count his lot. Put that up, question.
So Eric, you have yes or no?
No.
Or yes?
I'm a no here, wait, wait, because of the topography. It, but, no, the, the question is, but Rita, cause you wanna make sure.
Whether the benefits taught by the athlete can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance, yes or no?
I think your answer is no. You said you can't.
You can't.
He did, so good. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said.
Tim said yes. Warren?
The government vote.
I think especially with the way, the way that seventeen affects, affects nine, I think that's why I'm a no as well. I am a no, I'm not a think, I am a no. Um, all right, what are others?
So, so on that, we have four.
With, with, with.
Four no's, yes, okay, so it'll be a no, okay?
Whether undesirable change to be produced in character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. I, going off lot nine. The size, character of the neighborhood, detriment to nearby property.
They're gonna stay within the building and move, so, assuming this is the spot where they're supposed to build, I think. Then it's not gonna be a detriment to the size.
Here you could argue that the.
You wouldn't say that.
I mean, once it's all built out, you're not gonna know lot size, it's just that much smaller, and you know. So, they go through that, right now, and you look at it, and never know that we have a size lots.
And so um, we looked at Shiraz, they were smaller lots over there as well, under the forty thousand, correct? Maybe an otherwise change.
Here you could argue that by proxy of seventeen, giving the variance to nine is a benefit to the neighborhood because it addresses the drainage. Right?
Correct. And that would be, that would be, and that would be, everything else would be, it's all to the engineers, we're not engineers. So, that, so with the property being smaller, maybe not conforming, and this piece given to the drainage district away from the water to go would be a benefit to the neighborhood, is that what you're saying?
The time seemed to address the drainage issue with it, clearly this one.
Yeah, the answer is, yeah. So whether undesirable change to be produced in character of neighborhood or detriment to the right properties. No. Yeah, say it louder. Tim? Warren?
If there were less lots, there's. Provisions for capturing the. Water. So the D C's approved this.
And it has to go through the engineers, correct? Go back to the planning board again. So. All of it, yeah.
So the town to. Use the water. And that's what I've heard. Everybody's worried about water.
For this to come as a variant, it was a conforming property until the town decided to change the piece away from it to allow for lot seventeen to occur. So through that, it's a no. Right?
That's.
That is my interpretation.
Sure.
Yes.
Because they could say, because we're not cutting that piece off, we're going to make it conforming, but yes, that's great.
That is the only reason that this is before us for variants to be given.
Correct, yes.
So your answer is?
It's a no.
Okay. So no.
Because this has to go back. To the engineers.
Oh, yes.
Engineers. Make it in it.
Okay, whether the request variance is substantial. So you're saying, I'm going to repeat them on, it's nine thousand one hundred and eleven to meet the forty thousand. So it's thirty-three percent. Twenty-three percent. I had twenty-three written down.
Sorry, correction.
No, no, twenty-three percent. I had twenty-three written down. Go ahead. Yes.
Twenty-five percent. We get twenty-five.
Twenty-three percent is what they need. They already have, they already have, you know, they need nine hundred and eleven, one hundred and eleven out of forty.
Nine, nine.
Nine thousand, something like that. I'm done with numbers.
It's substantial, yes.
Good.
Yes, because it's, it's substantial.
I'm saying no. But I'm going to be outboarded, which is fine.
No, I'm going to agree with you. I don't, I don't think, in the grand scheme of things, it's not a substantial variance because of. Well, in relation to the size of the lot, the amount of square footage needed for that lot to exist per zoning.
Right.
And in either, either way, and again, we were to look at solely at nine and the variance that we're trying to get for it, but. Even if they were to take lot nine away. Based on where their planned for projects can be poured up, whether they're diaphragm or not. This variance is a quarter of the lot size. I don't think based upon. That that it's a significant.
I'm also going to go off the meeting and, and I don't want to reference the planning board, who came up with that forty thousand? I looked it up in pursuit for that number that mentioned that planning board, Arnie? I can't remember.
Oh, like, why, why is it?
Why isn't it forty thousand? And I was like, well, that's a good point, so I was going to check, you went to look it up. And it's the first, I totally just, the suing, it was to do with like sewer lines, water lines that are at forty thousand, but that was just.
About town code, that's.
No, it wasn't. That was just the history behind it, because no one really knew. Someone asked Tom. I'm changing mine to no.
That is not the standard for.
Is that okay? Yeah, it's a discussion, okay.
Yes.
Eric? I'm trying to, is it substantial? Does it stress lane?
No, because we're just talking about lot nine.
I know.
What is that there?
But you see the rest of the lot's round.
Is it substantial?
Is it substantial?
No, because it's kind of bringing you to conflict.
So Eric's enough?
Well, yeah, that's, that's a good point.
Exactly.
Percentage is high, but we're not looking at percentages, we're looking at this.
I'm thinking that functionality.
With thirty thousand eight hundred eight square feet, you can still build a single family home and have plenty of.
So we're saying, we're, for four, it's, for three, it's no. Correct? Just because it's, this is conditional to the lot?
Yeah.
Okay. Whether variance has adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? I think with the nine, because it took away, the reason why we have this variance is because they were trying to be implement to be in, but with.
Seventeen, this is, that's. It's just.
I was trying to solve the problem.
Right.
We're part of it.
Part.
And the five, and the.
So does it have an adverse impact, impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? Are we just, this particular neighborhood? Or the things around it? I think that's a little bit trickier because it's.
So. I would say based upon lot nine, no, looking at the project, yes.
Got it. I think the.
Again, looking at solely at lot nine or the areas, it's looking, we're discussing it. I'm looking at pragmatical terms.
And I would say. Oh, also, I won't mention that right now. I didn't mean to use that. Okay, okay. Would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? So on lot number nine, it has environmental or physical impact, so variance itself have an impact on the neighborhood. No. No.
No.
No, okay. Whether the alleged difficulty was created self-created? Yes, yes.
That answers.
I don't, because we don't have two subdivisions.
That's true.
I know that the answer is always yes.
Actually, in that case, you could argue that that's no, because the variance was created by the town, not by the developer, so therefore it actually is no.
Because of the drainage.
Because the drainage. But.
This is why, this is why I was in charge of debate club in high school. You're coming, you're.
Okay.
What?
Are we going to, I, I would still say it's self-created, because we're wanting to put a name to it and, and it's, they've created it. I'm going with yes.
I will counter and say no, because the town created the. Not the property.
The town suggestion.
Yeah.
But they didn't have to do it.
Right, they didn't have to say yes to it. I mean, technically, you would have had to, because it'd be easy to force them to, but they could have found another way for the town to grab access, because they could have done it through this back mystery parcel.
All right, Eric, what's your answer? Okay. Warren?
I don't know.
Okay, okay.
So the answer is no.
So the answer is no. The Z B A activity consideration, the above five factors finds the benefit to the application does outweigh. The detriment to the neighborhood or community.
What are her numbers?
All of them were answered.
All of them were answered.
All answered, but now, all were no's. So it does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood and community. C B finds further, further finds a variance for the, for. Fifty-two eighty Oak Lane is the minimum, or I'm sorry, nine thousand one hundred and eleven square feet is a minimum variance that should be granted in order to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and help the safety and welfare of the community. Can I get a motion?
All right.
Yeah.
All right. No, I just got new ones today, and I have progressive lenses, just so everybody knows now that I'm over forty. So if I look down, I can read better. All right. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to grant a variance. For Oak Road Properties LLC fifty-two eighty Oak Lane fatal near one three zero six six, tax map ID one zero four dot dash zero one dash three nine dot two. Of the area variance of nine thousand one hundred and eleven square feet for lot number nine. Parents' bigger, greater construction subdivision as referred by the planning.
Give a second. All in favor?
Uh.
Hi. Anybody? So. The motion carries.
I hope there's not a war. I hope there's no war.
Well, there will be the planning board, the engineers, the D C.
It's all in this question.
Family town.
That's what's going to make it work.
She needs the twenty-one.
I think, I think there's a, I was looking at, we submitted a short form, environmental assessment form with this project. Because this project has a lot of moving parts, we did not resubmit the long form, I think.
Okay, sorry.
I think the document she was referencing was issued, but.
Tommy.
You were very hard on drive that was getting to me in the application.
Well, I could, I could resubmit.
Just let's ask.
Just look it over.
Resubmit for the planning board, so this is not, if, if this is superseded, this is not the right one.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get you.
Make sure it's the right one.
I just, I didn't think I need the full, I'm sorry, I didn't think I needed the full transmittal, so it could have been.
He knows.
It's a short form, and the one that she was referring to is a long form, maybe seven, could have been us, I don't know.
Yeah.
We have directives. But thank you.
I think you could split the one three six different long form.
Okay. Okay.
The planning board started to get, I wanted to.
I know.
You have many more meetings with them.
Have a good night.
Don't forget.
Even though it's not listed.
Business.
Other business? Eric, do you have any other business?
Reapplications for that small possibly.
Reapplications.
Also, if you, also if you have not turned in your classes that you want to take for the symposium, please have them to these in a later event tomorrow.
I think all of them are in it. We got them all in.
I mean, I, yeah, we're going to look for something online for you, you looked at it last year.
They shouldn't like. Uh, okay, March twenty-sixth.
May I make a motion to adjourn?
March twenty-sixth.
I'll second that.
March twenty-fifth.
March twenty-fifth.
So Wednesday.
Wednesday.
I get a second to move to you then?
I second the motion.
All in favor?